All right. My computer says seven o'clock. So, we're gonna call the meeting to order. We're on time. We have this evening with us a whole group of prestigious young women and men. Man? One guy? Ah, here comes the second guy. From the Mount West Tonka government class. So, welcome all of you students here and thank you for coming. As I said before, to some of you, it's a short agenda for, I'm sure you're happy about that, but not really exciting, but I hope you stay for the whole event. So, with that, just a quick reminder, please, if you have cell phones or electronic devices, turn them off on airplane mode so they don't disrupt the meeting. And with that, I'm going to ask first order of business, will you please stand and say the pledge of allegiance with us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, first, I'd like to make a few introductions. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And to my left are council members Pam Mortenson, Mike Maliter, John Chumperlin, Shannon Bruce, and on the end, we have our city engineer Allison Fousky with WSB. And then, we also have our city clerk Chris Lindquist. Our director of administration is Cassandra Tabor. And sitting behind her, we just don't have enough room at the podium here, is our Public Works superintendent Gary Peters. Now, to my right, we have our city administrator Mike Barone. Brian Grimm is our finance director. David Abel is our community director. And then, we have next to him, community development director, excuse me. And then, we have Ron Beatty, who is our city attorney with Kennedy and Graven. And then, on the end, we have our chief of police Paul Falls. So, again, welcome, everyone. And our first order is approval of our agenda. Do we have any changes or additions? Hearing none. Is there then a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Mr. Chumperlin. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. We don't have any special presentations this evening. We also don't have anybody signed up under persons to be heard, so we'll move on to consent agenda items. Are there any that you wish to remove?
I'd like to remove item C, please.
That would be approve claims, all right? Any other ones you want to remove for discussion? Otherwise, that would then include approve our work session meeting minutes from September 16th, 2019. B is approve our regular meeting minutes from September 16th, 2019. D is a resolution to accept the resignation from Ryan Forniak for our CSO. E is a resolution to certify the delinquent utilities to 2020 taxes. F is a resolution to certify delinquent land use special fees to 2020 taxes. And G is to accept the St. Boniface proposed fire service pension increase for 2020. Any discussion? Is there a motion then to approve consent agenda items A, B, D, E, F, and G?
So, so moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second. Oh, go ahead. I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made by Mr. Maliter and seconded by Ms. Bruce to approve consent agenda items A, B, D, E, F, and G. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Mr. Maliter, claims, you had some questions?
Yes, there are two items on here. One is the carefree services for streets we've been after the storm. And then, another one to Hennepin County Technical College for chainsaw safety training. I think both of these are candidates that probably could be taken from the tree replacement fund. The storm stuff was kind of in line with what we talked about previously, and chainsaws are used on trees. So, I would like to see both of those put to the tree replacement fund if everyone's on agreement with that.
So, they can be approved as is just documented to a different account?
Right. They're taken right now from the general fund. I'd just like to see that changed.
Okay.
That sounds good. Yeah, and then we also, we do have that amount for moving with the staff time.
Right.
In conjunction with that for after the storm. Yep, we can.
Yeah, just so we credit the correct account?
Yes.
Or debit the correct account?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other items? Mr. Chumperlin, did you have anything?
Well, it's been taken out. I did question the $400 charged to the building structure maintenance. It was defined as restriping the parking stalls at City Hall. I thought it was in regards to our construction here, which would be a capital project, and thusly, this could go to capital. But Mr. Grimm has pointed out it was for other striping over at the, was it over at the public?
Yeah, the, yeah, public safety. Yeah, it was just doing some touch-up of striping over the, over there.
Turbing striping.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So, it's expense.
Okay, good. All right, any other questions? Otherwise, Mr. Maliter, do you want to make a motion to approve the claims?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Maliter made that motion and Mr. Chumperlin seconded that. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So, we don't have any public hearings this evening, and we'll move on to our business items. First business item is, it says, approve professional services agreement and authorize preparation of feasibility study for the 2020 MSA Halsted Drive project. I just want to clarify, that's an incorrect title because we're not authorizing a feasibility study since we already know what we're gonna do. We did the coring samples. What we're actually doing is talking about the design and specifications and bidding process. So, Ms. Fousky.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate the clarification. When setting the agenda, initially, I had indicated to city clerk Lindquist that it would be similar to our past one, which obviously was erroneous with the feasibility report. So, included in your packet is a proposal for engineering services to complete the design and bidding for the Halsted Drive overlay improvements, as we discussed previously at a council. One item to include in our discussion, and as indicated in the packet, is the proposed project, after having some discussions with Public Works superintendent Peters, is to include the boat launch and paving of the parking stalls on the northern section of that east-west portion of Halsted to help reduce some maintenance costs that the Public Works crew realizes with that. So, we included that in the project scope and within the fee. And so, with that, we would be looking at council direction as to approve that professional services agreement so we could go ahead and get the survey information gathered and get started on some design work.
Okay. My question is, we, I don't know if I, I think I've talked with Gary, I'm not sure, Mr. Falls, Paul, maybe Chief, about adding some additional parking along Halsted, so it would be west, I believe, west of Lakeside. Is there any way of doing that with this project, or would that be a separate project?
Madam Mayor, we could certainly look at that within the scope of the project. One of the things that we have to be cognizant of is that it does not trigger a watershed district permit or any stormwater management requirements. But we could certainly look at maximizing within the right-of-way that we would have, you know, that we're looking at grading and so on. But we could certainly look at that and come back to the council with an update on that at a later meeting if that is.
Okay, I don't want to, how to say, I don't want to slow down the process because we know we're kind of under the gun with this. So, I want to move forward with that. I just want to make, you know, put that out there because I know there's been some talk about some parking issues with that boat ramp there. And if we could get a few extra stalls, that would be great.
Certainly. We'll look into that, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
I did hear that complaint as well. So, it's a good time to do that.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just for clarification, I think what we're talking about is the land between where the current boat parking ends, all the way down on the, I guess it would be the west side of the road, all the way down to the guardrail. That used to be boat trailer parking on the side there, and now, with the redo of the road, that piece was eliminated. So, we're asking to hopefully be able to add that back in because it's forcing people to park on Lakeside with trailers. And so, the request from the residents of that neighborhood was to add that parking back so that it would alleviate people from parking in the neighborhood and get them back out onto the main street.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, thank you.
So, what was the logic in eliminating it in the first place? I wasn't on the council at the time.
I don't know that the.
There's curbing in place right now to protect the 301 slope. They had installed curbing on the north side there. If you go past where the transition from the old blocktop to new blocktop started to go sideways, there's a strip of about 150 feet of new high-back curb to keep the bank at a 301 slope, maintainable slope. So, that is going to trigger an issue for parking there at least, but we can look before and after that.
Okay.
So, it'd be parking in the road.
Okay, so we wouldn't be taking out that newly-installed curb, then?
No, it would not. Because the slope through there, I don't know, would be pretty tough to keep it maintainable 301 slope.
So, that, does that leave any option, then, to expand?
There's some room before and after we could look at.
Okay.
I'll look at it with Fousky. We'll try to figure some plans out.
Okay. All right. Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, otherwise, is there a motion to approve the resolution? It would be 132-19, authorizing preparation of plans, specifications, and bidding in professional services for the 2020 MSA Street Improvement Halsted Drive project?
So moved.
Okay, motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr., Ms. Mortenson made that motion and Mr. Chumperlin seconded that. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Thank you. So, next, we have item number B, and that's approve our auditing services contract for financial audits for 2019, 2020, and 2019. Oh, yeah, of course, they do it in March, of course, yep. 2019, 20, and 21 with Carlton Larson Allen, that's who has been doing it.
Correct, yeah.
So, Mr. Grimm?
Yep, Madam Mayor and council. So, yeah, they always, you have to think back, the audits are always looking back, budgets are going forward. So, this would be for the 2019 fiscal year, once it ends the audit, then, and then 2020 and 2021 as well. And I guess, yeah, it sort of came up here, that our most recent audit contract for the three years, it ended a sort of joke, there's, as a finance director, either an audit season or budget season, so it's sort of, I don't know, one's more fun than the next, I guess, but, so.
It's called job security.
That's a CPA joke. It's a little corny, you know, where I'm going. But, so, yeah, so what I did is I reached out to Clifton Larson Allen and see what they would be able to quote for us for both a one-year as well as a three-year for, you know, those aforementioned years of 1920 and 21. So, this is on page 41 in your packet in the memo. Couple items, I just wanted to give reference, so the cost of our audit for 2018 was just shy of $25,000, it was $24,950. They quoted 2019, for 2019, they quoted $25,925. If it'd be a one-year contract versus a three, it'd be slightly higher, it'd be $26,675. And obviously, that's, you know, they're looking for a little continuity. And I did reference in the memo also, we've had, if you go back about 15 years or so, we've had MMKR as an audit firm and also KDV or Bergen KDV, just to give some reference as far as we have switched, you know, as far as audit rotation in the past, you know, not-too-distant future. This would be, I guess, years seven or seven, eight, nine with Clifton Larson Allen. I think we've sort of had a history of, you know, every five, six to 10 years, maybe, switching. You know, what I would almost say is maybe this would be the last three-year go-around, and then, maybe, we'd look to go up for RFP. But based on their price being, you know, very, you know, reasonable and very, you know, pretty much inflationary increase, as well as, you know, I think that they've done a professional and quality work during the time for, you know, from finance staff perspective, as well as, I think, as far as, you know, Mr. Barone and others, I guess, that would be the recommendation to go with them for three more years, I guess.
Okay.
If there's any questions the council has, I'll be more than willing to answer, so.
Any questions for Mr. Grimm? I noticed it was about a 3% increase from 2019 to 20, and then about a 2.5% increase after that.
Yep, and they note in some of that has with, you know, there's new gasbies that come out and stuff, so some of that, they're even just trying to make sure that they, you know, capture the, those type of items too, and, you know, make sure they're, you know, it's extra time when they gotta do those, implement those new gasbies and stuff, so.
And they're good to work with?
Yeah, they've been really, well, as far as, just, if you have a question during the year, they'll answer it and stuff, and they're very responsive. And, you know, we've had different people over the years, too, you know, there's the managers rotating, you know, rotation of staff people, and they've all been good to work with. They, you know, they ask their tough questions, and they have their, what do you call, professional skepticism or whatever, but they do a good job as far as what they, in the field, as well as, I think, what they've presented to the council for the summary information and reports or whatever.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, I notice it would be the resolution on page 46, which details out the three years, as well as if, I guess the other item to note is if there is a single audit, there is that additional few thousand-dollar fee, but that would be with any auditing firm. But that only, that threshold kicks in if we get like, I think it's $750,000 or more of federal monies, which, the only times we've had to do single audits is if, like, with the PFA project, when we got PFA loan, there's some federal component to that, so.
That they have to do, yeah.
I don't envision us getting 3/4 of a million dollars or more of federal money in that.
That would be nice.
It'd be nice, but I don't see where it would be coming from, I guess.
Yeah.
It's just, so.
All right. So, then, is there any other questions, comments? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve the auditing services for year in 2019, 20, and 21 with Clifton Larson Allen?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Mr. Maliter. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So, next, we move on to approve our three-year contract with the Corner House for forensic interviews. I believe that's the chief.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, council. As you can see before you tonight, this is basically a renewal of, or I guess it's a new agreement with Corner House, which provides forensic interview services primarily for juvenile sexual assault victims. That's their primary focus, although they will interview juveniles and vulnerable adults in other, I guess, large, complex cases as well. And so, we have been working with them for years and years, so this isn't new to us. I guess Corner House is, rather than doing a year-to-year agreement, they're trying to go for longer-term agreements. And as you can see, their rates have gone up a little bit. I don't have the percentage in front of me, but I can tell you that in 2007, we paid $1,104 annually, and then in '18, we paid $1,137. So, this is a fairly significant jump. With that said, Corner House has had to unfortunately add staff because this problem has become more prevalent, and so, they've had to add staff. They also are working out of a very old, essentially, it's a residential property in Minneapolis. They've been there for many, many years. It's very cramped, and so, I think they're looking not only to expand staff, but to find a facility that better accommodates for these type of services. This is a very specialized service. They work very closely with the Hennepin County Attorney's Office, who obviously sets the guidelines for these procedures. We're not allowed, as police officers, just to interview juveniles in these types of circumstances on our own. That evidence or that interview wouldn't be admissible. And so, you have to follow very strict guidelines when doing this. So, it is a very specialized service. They have done an outstanding job over the years. And we are starting to see, unfortunately, as I mentioned, a bit of an increase in the number of interviews that we request each year. And so, with that, I think I'll just share a little bit of this data with you without going into great detail, and if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer those later. But in 2014, we had three forensic interviews. 15 was two, 16 was three, 17, we only had one. 2018, we had four. And year-to-date, this year, we've already had five. So, that's, unfortunately, that's a lot of these types of interviews. There, I don't have the specific data. It was in 2011 or '12, we had a homicide case that involved a toddler. There was, I believe, 11 children that had to be interviewed, so we utilized Corner House for those services. As you can imagine, that would be an overwhelming task. And so, under the contract, obviously, that would be a very, very good value. But, so, I guess with that, the entire packet is, that I have is in your packet.
Right.
So, I guess with that, I guess I don't have much to add, other than to answer any questions you might have.
Does the council have any questions?
I have a question. So, we pay the contracted annual fee regardless of whether we use them or not?
That is correct, yes. Years ago, we, you had an option to pay by the interview, which is, today would be about $600 to $800 per interview. That would not include anything besides the interview. As you can see in the packet, there are a number of other services that would be provided in addition to the interview. If there's advocates or court testimony, all of that is included. There's also, for each one of these interviews, someone from the Hennepin County Attorney's Office is present, and all of that is included in the contract pricing. So, the answer, I guess the long answer to that question is, yes, we pay that amount whether we have an interview or not. But given the current trend, it looks like we're doing more rather than less each year.
Yep. Thanks.
Kind of like an insurance policy. Sometimes you need it, sometimes you don't.
Correct.
But a good, good one to have.
Yes, and this is, this is a very standard practice throughout Hennepin County, just because of the direct cooperation with the Hennepin County Attorney's Office.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the three-year contract with the Corner House for forensic interviews as presented in our packet. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So, that concludes our business items, and we'll move on to administrative items, staff reports. Mr. Barone?
Yes, Mayor and council, I have a couple of items. And then, we have director of administration scheduled to speak, and I'm also gonna want the city engineer to talk a little bit about kind of where we are in road projects for this year. My two items to just remind the council, our next meeting is in two weeks, not like tonight, where we had a three-week gap, we're back to our regular two-week schedule. And then, the only other item I have is that, since we last met, is that we did have our new phone system installed on September 24th, and there were essentially no issues at all with that. The only thing that we did have to do with that is buy one additional piece of equipment, and that was called a sidecar. It's a 60-button thing that goes on a phone at a front desk. We bought one for here, included in the quote that we approved, but we did not buy one, a sidecar for the phone in PD. We didn't know it was, they didn't know, it was not the sidecar that they had over there wasn't gonna work, so it was like a dollar, $100 roughly. So, we had to buy that. We actually bought the year-old version because that was gonna require less labor and time for them to come back and do that setup. This was essentially unbox it, plug it in, and it worked by buying last year's model, so. So, I think, other than that, there was no issues. I didn't hear of any issues from staff about voicemails not transferring over, things of that nature. We didn't hear, I don't believe, anything from the public about downtime. I think we were down less than half an hour. So, they were set and ready to go, and they just flipped the switch and did the switch out, and we're up and running, so. So, with that, I don't have any other additional comments for tonight, so, Ms. Tabor?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I have two things for you. First of all, on Thursday, November 14th, the League of Minnesota Cities has their Metro Regional Meeting and the Metro Cities Policy Adoption Meeting. Luncheon is at 11:30, and the meeting is from 1:30 to 6:30, and that is at the Sheraton Minneapolis West near Ridgedale in Minnetonka. So, if any of the council members are interested in attending that, I can, A, get you the information so you have the outline, if you would like that, and then, B, I can do the registration for you. So, I'll send you an email with this information, and if you'd like to attend, I can get you set up for that.
I think I already mentioned to Mr. Barone that I'll be attending, so.
Yes, I have you on my list.
Thank you.
Perfect. The second piece, as noted on our agenda, we had a resignation for our CSO position, and so, we have begun that process in looking for another CSO. We had six applicants make it to the first interview session. We did that on October 1st. That was myself, Chief Falls, and one of our sergeants, Sergeant Cummings. We have two final candidates who will be interviewing the middle of this week, and ideally, will be walking away, ready to make a recommendation to the personnel committee here at the end of the week. So, we're hopeful that's the most applications that we've seen for a CSO in quite a while, if you can recall.
I was gonna say, yeah.
So, that was a very surprising positive for us, so that was nice.
So, who's doing that job while he's gone, or has he left yet?
He has left, and I can let Chief Falls speak to that.
Yes, Madam Mayor, council, we have two CSOs, as you're aware, so we just simply shifted the hours and days for the CSO that still left, and he's doing basically both jobs for now.
Okay, so it's getting covered.
It is getting covered, yes.
Glad to hear that you were able to find some good, quality candidates as quickly as you did, so that's great.
And I think that was really positive, too, just to mention something we've been working on from a staffing perspective, is just really trying to draw as much diversity, whether it's racial diversity or gender diversity. We had a very diverse group of candidates this time around, which was just really nice to see as well. So, all good news.
Great, thank you. And Ms. Fousky?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm pleased to provide you an update with this year's street project, which included reclamation, mill and overlay. The contractors completed their work, including restoration, so we're happy to have that project in and out of town here. Halsted Drive, the contractor was out putting out some additional topsoil and seed on Farm Hill. And as you may recall, TruGreen was contracted to go and do some additional work on the property owners. The last, we've had discussion with them, has been happy with that work, so we appreciate council working with staff to make people happy out there again. County Road 44, work continues through there. They do have some, about 3,000 linear feet of pipe left to install this winter, pardon me, this fall. So, we are hopeful that with the rain that we've had, that that will cease, so that they can continue that installation, and hopefully, their plan is to get the road open before winter. But as I mentioned, they do have some additional pipe to install through there.
If they don't get the pipe installed, can they still reopen 44? I mean, this is, we can't go through another winter without that road open.
I don't know if they have temporary.
I mean, I don't care if they put gravel down, I mean, you know?
Well, they're planning on paving next week, starting in the shady end. Their road crew is in place now. They have some, they have some concrete work and some storm work in the air. They are doing the final grade, they're bringing rock and getting up to, up to the base, up to the level where they need to be.
Okay.
They're gonna start doing the base course of the pavement. 3,000 feet of pipe is, has to be in because I think they wanna try to get all their temporary piping out of there, so I think they're planning, their plan is to have everything paved by the end of the month. I don't know if they make that, but, I mean, the pipe they have left is from hard gravel to Sinclair.
Okay.
Is what they have left.
Yeah, okay. All right.
It was, we drew the tunneling work, is what they're waiting for.
Yeah. Are they going to directional bore it?
They're done, the tunnel, they're ready to, basically they're fighting, they're trying to get the roadwork done.
Okay.
To get everything up to part. They have one, one manhole left to put in, manhole structure, and then.
Cross our fingers. Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just one more quick update for the council, the Kings Point Road Water Main and Street Repair. We've worked with Public Works and the contractor to do a shutdown overnight, which will occur very early in the morning of Wednesday with the residents. We've communicated with staff here as far as when that shutdown would occur so that we can get that valve put in and get going with the repair, so.
So you're talking shutdown this Wednesday?
Correct.
And weather-wise, we're okay?
It's looking good so far.
Okay, cross our fingers.
Friday, Saturday doesn't look so good, but Wednesday's fine.
Wednesday, Thursday doesn't look good either, but they're going to do it.
Okay, and then what about then resurfacing it? How, when do they do that?
Well, the contractor will put in the valve so that they can go ahead and get going with the water main repair, and we'll put updates on the website as they come through there. But we anticipate that the contractor should be in and in complete if weather holds up here in the next few, he should be done with, and I believe he's at a week or two.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other? Oh, so you said the Duchesne Lane and Circle and Oxyoke, all of that reclamation and the Mill and Overlay, they're all done, completely done, and everybody's happy?
As far as I know, everyone's happy. The contractor completed their work.
Okay.
And as far as I know, every, all the, I confirmed with the inspector today that all of the restoration work has been completed as well.
Okay, all right. That's good to hear because, you know, other projects have lingered on many, many, far too long, so great. That's great news. All right. Anybody else, any other staff reports?
I don't believe so.
Otherwise, we'll go to council reports. We'll start with Ms. Bruce.
I don't have anything.
Okay, Mr. Trumperland?
I'm here, Sarah Creek. We've had two meetings since our last meeting. Our normal meeting on September 19th, the subcommittee gave their input on the four engineering firms that have responded to our requests for services and ranking them and giving our pros and cons. Out of that, there was a lot of discussion and we decided they needed, we needed another special meeting for all the members to be involved. And out of that meeting, unbelievable, all five of us had the same ranking. Out of the, so out of that, the number one, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Joe.
Joe Baker, Mr. Baker.
Baker was going to, we came up with a list of questions for the number one applicant, and Mr. Baker was going to contact them and report back to us at our regular meeting here in October.
All right. So you'll make a decision. This is for next year?
Correct, it's for effective January 1st.
Okay. And so Mr. Kujawa, is he gone now or is he still there?
He's still there through December.
Through, okay, all right.
And then he's going to be pinch hitting for a while, but basically just as passing his knowledge on.
You'll have to do something, a good send-off for him because he's been there a long time.
Funny thing, you said that, the Brew Pub in Maple Plain is due to open in November, and we're suggesting we go over there for the farewell.
A farewell, okay. All right. Let me know about that.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Malater?
I was unable to make the last LMCD meeting due to illness, but we have another one scheduled for this Wednesday night. I'm not on time, so.
Okay. On that same note, I know you've told me that you hope not to be reappointed. You will not accept an appointment to the.
Right, my term goes through January of.
Right.
28th, 20th, so three, four months.
So just with that, if people know of anybody that would like to serve in that capacity, and we'll also then be putting out some notices for people to apply, if anybody on the council would like to do that, step into that role, we'd accept that as well, so.
And what dates do they meet?
Wednesday.
Wednesdays.
Yeah.
Second and fourth of the month. Second and fourth of the month is the month. So it's the off weeks of the council general speaking. So like this one day.
At 7?
Yeah.
7, which session at 6.
Okay.
Okay, so keep that in mind. All right, Ms. Mortensen?
I attended on the 19th of September, the WCC meeting. It was held at Gillespie Center.